Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
Stands one nation.
Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, welcome everybody tonight to the meeting. And how we doing on addition or deletion, Kristin?
This is Kristin. There was one letter submitted regarding the topic under older unfinished business of the inclusivity declaration. A resident submitted a letter that had been requested to be presented and acknowledged. I have that under additions. Otherwise, no further additions to the agenda. And as far as I'm aware, there have been no requested deletions.
Okay. Could you go through and introduce everyone, please?
Yes, so this is Kristin Powers. Members in attendance this evening, we have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Bob Jones, Jessica Van Orte, and Rich Hewlett. Others in attendance, we have myself. I believe we have Ray and Beth Duquette, Julie Mack, Harley Cudney, Chuck Whedon, Frank Nelson, Rhonda Schlangen, Paul Tullander, I think. Maureen Brown, Keith Mason, Fred Stone, I believe. Bob, Bob and Martha Shoneman and Jennifer Sullivan. If there's anybody else I forgot. You're welcome to state your name now.
Okay, I guess we got everybody. Minutes from the previous meeting. Anybody have anything that they wanted to comment about those minutes? Everybody loved them then, I suppose.
I move, I move, we accept the, oh, sorry.
Okay. So Rich and Jessica are making a motion in a second to accept the minutes from the last meeting. Any more discussion?
You just keep cutting out on me, Mike. This is Rich. Not sure if it's on my end or on your end.
Is that, that any different? You, you were a little late getting, getting that motion in too. So I don't know who's, whose microphone isn't. Is everybody else hearing me all right?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Okay, good. So Jessica and Rich made a motion in a second to accept the minutes. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Pre-released, did we have none? Okay. Announcements.
None from my, none from me, other than the usual business of when speaking, please be sure to state who you are and address questions to the chairman, Mike Beecher.
Okay. And we'll go on to a zoning administrator's report.
This is Kristin. I, there was not one that I saw that came through to my email in the last several days. I'm not sure if anybody else received anything.
I did not see anything.
I, I combed through because sometimes he'll send it well ahead of time. So I did a quick search back to see if I'm, if I was missing something, but I, as far as I'm aware, I don't think there was anything formally submitted for this meeting.
Okay, I think we had one the last minute, last meeting anyways, right? Usually they tend to be more the first, first Mondays.
Yeah.
Or Tuesdays, I mean, first meeting of the month.
Yeah.
Okay, planning commission?
Yes. This is Jessica. Yes, I'm putting on my planning commission hat now. We have, we had the public hearing last night on the updates to the zoning bylaws. It was pretty well attended. A couple of folks who are here right now were there and some additional people. I think we had about six or seven members of the public there. And then we were able to adjourn that meeting and go into our regular meeting and we made two small amendments to what we currently had for the zoning bylaws. And then we approved it and have sent it on to the select board. So now it's time for the select board to go through the warning and public hearing process. When that is complete and the select board has made a, has made a decision, if, if we do approve it, I'm going to be, I have the contact information for the, I always forget their acronym, the natural resources board, which we have to send all the information to. There are five documents that they need us to send, proving that we've done this correctly. Once it's done, and then they will, then they will review it and they should approve us for the 10 acre town. So I don't know what the holdup was last time we did this go around, but this time I'm gonna send the stuff directly to the natural resources board. So that, and then make sure that they got it and that they've made a decision. So that's where we're at with that.
Excellent. So while, while we're on this, I, I believe we have to warn that we're gonna have public con, comment about the changes?
Yes, we have to warn it with 15 days to spare. So the first public hearing date we could have would be our meeting four weeks from now.
Okay. Does anybody see any reason why we shouldn't put that in the morning to have our, our public meeting 15, uh, four weeks from now? Looks like that. That looks like the plan, so.
Yeah, last night we were going over the dates and I believe that it was brought up that after the public hearing, there will then be a 21 day period in which people could appeal or, you know, there's a 21 day period after that and then, and then it can finally go into effect. So I think it's early May, Julie, Julie was there and did the math for us. And I think she said it was going to be May the 4th, when we could finally have it be official.
Okay, everybody in favor of, of having that worn for May the 4th?
Well, that would, that wouldn't be the date of, of the hearing. Oh, here's Julie telling us in the chat, she thinks she was off by a week. The, what would our date be for four weeks from now?
It would be the, this is Kristin, it would be the, so the next meeting is on April 6th, and then the one following that would be April 20th.
Yeah, I think it would have to be the April 20th that we would warn.
And may I ask a clarification on that? Just, oh, so yeah, Julie saying April 20th, but then May 11th for the final date. So would this be something, this warning would be incorporated into the regular meeting warning? Or would it have to be two separate?
No, it, as long as, I think the last time we've done it, we've, we've left, we've allotted a little bit of time during a regular meeting to have any public comment for that. So it gets right along with the regular meeting. It just stating that, that we will be discussing and voting on the changes for the, the bylaws.
Right, we, we did that last night with our planning commission meeting. We first adjourned the public hearing. I mean, we first brought the public hearing to, to order, then we had the public hearing, which ended up running about 45 minutes to an hour. And then we adjourned that, and then we had a regular meeting after that, somewhat abbreviated. I do know that the warning has to go into the Lakes Free Press. And, or, you know, a, a regional newspaper and the Lakes Free Press is the one that we've chosen. And that it has to, the warning has to go in there 15, at least 15 days before the, before the hearing happens.
Okay.
Yeah. And the warning needs to contain the, there's certain, there's specific things that the warning has to contain.
So perhaps Jessica, you and I can work together.
We can work together, yeah. I have all the stuff. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I was going to say, I've done these before, but infrequently. So we can work together on figuring out all of our dates and verbiage and whatnot.
Great, we'll get together on that. I have all of the, I have the warning that we sent out for the planning commission. And it just has, in addition to the date and time, it has to have a list of the proposed changes, which I already have, so we can, we can work together on that. Right?
Okay, that's great.
This is Frank, could I add something?
Yes.
This process is still a state of flux, so things can change at the hearing. If there's changes that need to be made, and ultimately the select board has the decision anyways. But this is not ironed out solid. So the public coming in and commenting would not be commenting on something that's set in stone at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, and I mean, last, last night, we did make two small amendments to it based on both public comment and on, and on things we'd noticed in the interim. So, yes.
Ray and Beth have a hand up?
Yes, I do. One of the things that I would like to see put into the bylaws is no one can receive a permit from the zoning administrator if they have taxes and arrears.
Okay. That.
Did you get that?
Yeah, I understand that and we'll mark that down, but at this point in the, in the process, we're gonna act on, on what's been proposed to us by the planning commission now, and then that will be added for a future, a future change.
Yeah, this is Jessica, and if I may speak to that, we do intend going forward, the, this, this particular change is very small that we've made, and it's mostly to honestly redo a few things that didn't get correctly done at some point in the past. The planning commission is hoping over the next probably about nine months to a year, to go through a more thorough look at the bylaws, especially as they relate to the town plan. In the areas of like affordable housing, in economic development, in agriculture, and in a couple other areas that are, that are mentioned to the town plan, that we want to make sure that the bylaws match with, so that they fulfill the aspirations of the town plan. And at that time, that might be something that we would be able to consider as we do a bit more in-depth look at the bylaws. So I, I'd have, we'd have, we can put that, that suggestion that Ray has into the list of things to consider. We've got a pretty big list of things that we're gonna be considering. So thank you, and I'll jot that down.
Thank you, Ray. Anything else from the planning commission side as far, so we got it pretty well figured out, we'll have, you guys will get together and, and get the appropriate warning in the paper so that we can have a a meeting and, and review it and, and go from there. If everything is, is still good and no one brings up any valid points to change, we can, we can accept that, that night, and that, that will move to the next page. Is that correct, Jessica?
Yes, that's correct. And I don't really have anything else to report from the planning commission.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Mike, do you need a motion for us to sequence this, or?
I don't know that I do, but it probably makes it a lot cleaner. So you're making a motion right now?
I'm, I'm gonna make the motion that the select board acknowledges receiving the new bylaws. And with the changes, and are scheduling a public hearing for April 20th in conjunction with the select board regular meeting.
Okay, that's great. I think that makes it a lot cleaner, John. Thank you. Do you have a second on that?
And Mike?
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion made in second. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Road foreman's report, Keith?
Uh, Kristin, can I ask you to read it?
Sure.
I don't have, I don't have a copy with me, so.
Okay, this is Kristin. Oh, hold on, sorry, someone else is coming in. This is Kristin. We have had one new person join, Tom Collard has joined us this evening. So here is the update on the road crew. We have only had minor mud problems on most roads. We laid down some stone from Wallingford Crush Stone on Kelly Hill Road and Towesley Road to keep passage and have 250 tons of crusher run from Galusha on hand, but looking like we are heading out of the woods as the road seemed to be sealing down nicely. The 08 IH truck needs a new steering box, and I have Chris Ross and Mark Ricketts lined up to install it. Our spring maintenance is, on the equipment is ongoing. I have met with Nick Baker from Hunter to see about getting help with the tree work on Herrick Brook Road and hope to have a price by meeting time, but have not yet heard. Our meeting with RRPC went well, and after updating our road inventory, we are well on our way to meeting our deadline for 2022. It's looking like winter is pretty well over and we came out of it well below budget. Our total salt usage was down and sand came out good as well. We are below budget by $12,000 on salt and $10,000 on sand, so my plan is to apply this where it is most needed, which is additional gravel. That's all.
That's, sounds like a lot of good news, Keith.
Well, that's good, if we can keep it that way. I mean, that's my way of asking for your blessing, if that's where we should put it, but I think that's where it should go. Or, you know, our winter.
Anybody have? Anybody have any questions or comments or about using that surplus in the, in the winter maintenance fund to do, to put gravel on the, on the roads where it's most needed?
I think Keith knows best what we need.
Okay, kind of goes hand in hand, that the, the sand kinda takes away a little bit from the surface and the gravel will fix it up. Rich?
I'm just having a really hard time hearing you. You keep cutting out. I don't know if it's my connection or your connection. Most generally, I have good connection here, but I'm missing a good portion of the meeting here. Due to certain.
Is it just Mike, Rich, or is it all of us?
Uh, it's, it's everybody.
Okay, it's probably you then.
All right, right now I can hear, hear well, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk loud.
You could try calling in by phone as a backup.
I may have to do that. That's, that's something, Mandy will have to do.
I, I know the feeling.
Uh, but if, if I'm not answering you, it's because I, I can't hear you, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so I, I met with Nick Baker over the weekend and down on the Herrick Brook Road where we're gonna be doing the grant. And there's a significant amount of tree work down there to do and so, and we also have the fact that we have to show substantial completion on that project by June 30th, the end of the fiscal year. So what I approached him about was doing the tree work, coming in with a mechanized unit and doing it. And actually, Rich met me down there yesterday morning and looked at it, because it's told him what I was thinking. Now, Nick's price came in late today at $8,500. Now, we're going to receive 20,000 from the grant program. And if that 20,000 would pay for the tree removal, our rental equipment and our new culverts, it probably, everything else is budgeted in our, within our budget. So we wouldn't be working outside of our budget beyond that. So my recommendation is, is that we take Hunter Excavation up on that offer and, and go forward with it and just because it's, that's not what we do well, and it's a significant amount of it, and it's gonna put us behind to go down there and spend all of our time, because we would be, I think we would probably be a month down there to do it. And he will come with a feller buncher and a log truck and a skidder and lay them all down, haul them away, and they would be all done. We would just have the brush and the stumps to deal with, and that's, that would work best for us. So I'm just want some feedback on that if I can.
Uh, Mike, this is Rich.
Yes.
Um, as Keith said, I looked at that project with Keith the, the other morning, and, and for $8,500, that is, that's money really well spent. That's a, it's a big, big project and, and if they get held up for a month doing it themselves, number one, there's, there's some really big trees and there's some safety concern. But number two, we take the chance of losing the $20,000 if the project's not substantially completed by the, the end of June.
Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, and by far, safety is, is our biggest thing. Our road crew isn't, is, is capable of cutting trees, but that's not, that's not their priority and their most highest skill level that they bring. So it's by far smartest to take their safety into the most consideration and have the job done by something that's a very safe way to do it, that's, and like you say, to be done and out so they can move on. Keith, does that leave us enough money for the culvert and, and the excavator?
Yeah, I'm, I was, was, I was thinking he was coming in at $10,000, and so I was pleasantly surprised at the 8,500. And yes, it does. We have to keep in mind that we're doing 2,900 feet of road there, okay? Of only about which half is qualifies for the grant. Okay, because only the connected parcels next to the brook are the ones that the grant applies to. So the other 50% of what we're doing is our money anyways. Okay? See what I'm saying? We're doing 20, 2,900 feet, and there's about 1,000 feet of it there that is connected road that is eligible for the grant. It's the retaining walls next to the road and stone line ditches and the upgrade of the culverts. That's, that's all the grant applies for. It does not, does not apply to putting the slate rubble on the road and the gravel that goes on top of it. That is our expense anyways. So, so, and that's, we got about $66,000 worth of culverts to put in there, and then that would leave enough so we would have at least substantially a month's rental on, on excavator or something to work there with, so.
Yes, that covers a portion of the grant. The rest of the time, the excavator, we're gonna have to, are we gonna need two excavators for that project?
Riley plans on loading us right now, and I'm hoping, hoping it doesn't change. And which you brought reminds me of something else, but let's finish this discussion first.
Does anybody else have any questions, John?
Uh, is there any timber there, or is it all bushy and full of hardware?
There, there is a couple of trees there that probably would make timber. I have to offer them to the landowner and see what happens. Okay, most of it, at best would be pulp. You know, it's, or firewood. It's nothing, a lot of dead hollow trees. There is some few larger maple there, but nothing, nothing substantial timber, no.
Okay.
Down by John Howard's driveway, there is a couple of oak that would be, we gotta decide what's gonna happen with, but.
Right, there's a, they, the trees actually belong to the person that owns the land, correct, Keith?
Well, we generally offer it to them, and if they were logging it, yes, they could, would be welcome to harvest those trees. But if we do something with them, we don't cut them down and deliver them to the mill for them. We'll cut them down and leave them there, but then they have to get them out of our way so that we can do our project. You understand? So, so.
Exactly.
That's a, that's a, a game time decision, if you will. I'm gonna talk to John Howard about it, because he's about the only one I know down there and, and see exactly one of them is right on the end of his driveway, and I assume it's his, and that'll get me headed the right direction anyway, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about this project on Herrick Brook Road? Somebody wanna make a motion that, that Keith go ahead and hire Hunter Excavating?
Mike, this is Rich, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I wanna hear a second?
John will second.
John will second that. And just as a matter of point, Hunter Excavating is about the only one that can come in with, in the area where the mechanic, mechanized, it's not like we can get a lot of, of other bids on it.
No, it's not. It's not like we're prioritizing a company over another. It's, he's got everything that's needed and he's employing local people and he's giving us a fair price. We better take it.
Okay.
And he, he's also underneath the $10,000 ceiling we have for non-bid.
Okay.
Situations.
But that makes it even clearer. Kristin?
This is Kristin. Would you like for me to include the price quote of $8,500 in that motion?
I think you should, yes. I'm probably gonna show up at Bob Jones's door to sign a contract. I have it in my email now, so.
Okay.
He's still the authorized signer, right?
Yes.
Yeah, as long as you guys have made a motion, then, then it's clear that he can sign it and we can get it back to him and, and get it in the works.
Okay, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Keith.
Uh, one more thing that I didn't put in there, I, and it's, we may be behind on it, but if it doesn't work, it'll work for next year, is I think we should write a letter of appreciation thanking the people that helped us last summer. Riley Williams is one, and Pedro Slate is the other. Um, just thanking them for their generous donation of time and materials to help us out on the roads, and it probably would, probably would help them out at tax time. I have the figures of what we took out of there for each one provided, and if I can get together with Kristin, she can put it on the town letterhead and we can get it to them. I, I think it would be a nice gesture anyway.
Okay. That's the right thing to do. Somebody wanna make? Somebody wanna make a motion in that?
Sure.
Jessica in?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, that we draft this letter in thanks to the people who helped us last summer with the, with the amounts in it.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, to Bob.
Bob, second that. Okay. Any more questions? All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich? Uh, it's connected, it's out. Go ahead, Rich, just shake your head. Okay. That's all in favor. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Keith or comments or anything?
I, I do. This is Jessica. Um, Keith, I know that when John and I met with you and the person from the state, that she had mentioned something, I think it was called a puck, that could be going to your phone so that you would be able to access things with the GPS when you weren't connected to the internet. Do you know what that device is and about how much it would be? Because I think it would be, if, if there was a way to budget that, it would be really nice for you to have that.
Yeah, I actually communicated with her since, Jessica, and, and she said she would be glad to come down and show me how to use it. And I think it's mainly, it's an app. If I put it in my phone, there's no expense. I think the discussion we were having there was, was a tablet, wasn't it?
I, I don't recall exactly, that's why I wanted to ask you.
Yeah, it was, I think we discussed it, maybe getting a tablet, but it's, uh, what it would allow me to do is to be out on the road and then I could pull up these 100 meter segments that I was standing on, and a GPS would plant right where I'm working, and I could do it from the field rather than being at the office and then driving to a road and try to lay out and, and see where you are, because the segments are color-coded, so you don't, you don't know exactly where one starts and stops, so. And, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'll be in constant conversation with her and I'll find out more about it.
Well, let us know if there's anything that you need from us for that, because it sounded like it would be very useful for you.
I, I think it would too, and we'll, we'll figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Keith? No, everything looks good. Oh, Julie Mack?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I was just wondering who, um, who is responsible for the signage on Button Falls Road where it hits Route thirty? Specifically the stop sign?
The state is, but that doesn't mean that we wouldn't fix it. Is it down?
It's been defaced.
Oh, okay.
And I would like it to be taken care of sooner than later. It's pretty vulgar.
Okay, I hadn't even, I was through there tonight even and hadn't even noticed. You on the Route thirty intersection?
Yeah, where, so you stopped to get onto Route thirty, so it's facing away from Route thirty, yeah.
Okay, I'll look into that, Julie. Um, by, by rule, the state takes care of their intersections where we touch the state road. But that being said, their plate is full usually too and something like that, we can go over and change a sign. We probably have one right at the shop that can go up, so.
Okay.
This is, this is Bob. Um, I noticed, I believe yesterday, um, somewhere from the red brick schoolhouse heading toward the school, um, I saw some spray paint in the road and, um, I, I guessed it was, might have been someone marking out the highway or phone lines or something like that. But then, uh, I noticed tonight that it must have been some kids just goofing around with, uh, some orange spray paint and stuff, writing stuff on the blacktop and, and stuff. So there's, there's been, been some people up to no good, uh.
Yeah, they were.
Out through the one fifty-three or thirty.
Actually into the cemetery too, Bob.
Okay.
You know, the one on one fifty-three. I don't think they did anything to anything in there, but there's, obviously they were in and out of there with some paint too, so. Maybe, maybe you'd wanna drive through there and look.
Okay, definitely will.
Okay, no one else has anything for Keith? Thank you. We're all set for you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Assessor's report.
There was not, this is Kristen. There was not one formerly submitted this evening. I'm not sure if John had any updates.
I do. Um, I talked with both uh, Folcher at the office and Julie. And Julie was able to get me a printout of the tax exempt uh, properties in town that are, what there is apparently is a statutory exemption. And this printout that Julie had for the twenty prop parcels uh, has each statute which addresses their exempt status. This is churches, cemeteries, including the old, uh, small ones. And, uh, so if anybody is interested in seeing that, that is available to someone. Also, there's five, four, four properties that the town votes on every five years, which include the fish and game land in, uh, Ken Hollow. It includes the two fire companies that are independent companies and the, uh, Mason's Lodge. So that's the difference. I, apparently Merck's land is gonna go under the statutory exemption from what I'm told, but some of the paperwork still needs to be filed. But, uh, if anyone asks a select board member, that's, there's statutory exemption and voted upon exemptions. That's my description. Anybody's got a better description? Correct me.
This is Frank. Can I add to that, John?
Go ahead, Frank.
Uh, I said something about this last meeting, but I don't think I got into depth of it. Is when the fishing game club was up for a change of use, a number of years ago, I was able to talk to a staff attorney, uh, of a Montpelier. And I was led to believe, and this is a few years ago now, that before the town said, okay, everything's just plain exempt, had, and we didn't vote on anything. And then the school funding went through the state. So this created a situation where there was a bunch, a lot of towns apparently with orphaned nonprofits that really didn't have any activity whatsoever. And that was the purpose to have the voting on them at that time. But the select board still had discretion on whether or not they wanted to have the vote on nonprofits that they considered active or not. Uh, but the idea was to get some of those properties off the, onto the tax rolls who were skit, you know, floating by, uh, for years and years and years with absolutely no activity. Um, with the organization, uh, that was nonprofit that was being exempted. And if I'm, something may have changed between now and then, but, um, I don't know of, of any. Thank you.
Yeah, John, John made that clear that it's a statutory exemption, so there's really nothing we can do about it. Thank you, Frank.
No, I'm talking about the ones that were voted on.
Right, but that's not what we're talking about now. We're talking about Merck statutory one. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have your hand.
Yeah, I just, one quick thing. I think John mentioned that there was still paperwork that needed to be filed, but that, I think the issue at hand is that there, the paperwork has all been, the necessary paperwork has been filed for next year. It was not filed timely for the current tax year that we're in. And that's where the confusion came from Merck because they felt that they were statutorily exempt and shouldn't have been on our grand list this year, but they were because they hadn't filed their paperwork in time.
So in order to get that cleared, they'll have to ask for, they'll have to ask for abatement, Julie, or?
They would have to ask for an abatement if they wanted something cleared. I do know that they have paid the principal that was due. Um, but they didn't pay like their penalties and interest. So if they're seeking, um, remedy from that, they would be required to go through the BOA.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Mike, of Julie, I think?
Yes, go ahead, Keith.
Julie, um, when it's statutorily exempt, does that value of that property remove from our education grand list or the taxpayers' deposit offset that cost?
Honestly, I don't know. I would have to look that up. I've, I think it comes off the grand list, but I don't know.
It would just be a question that deserves an answer, that's all.
Yep.
Because our education grand list is different from our general grand list because all of our nonprofits and stuff, like even the value of our town properties go back into that education grand list.
And I, I think that we, we have a, we have a like local agreement tax that is for the voted exemptions. I don't think it includes the statutorily exempt. So I think that it wouldn't impact, like, we wouldn't then be due, be liable for paying the education taxes on that property because it's not a voted exemption. I think we're only liable to pay the education taxes on properties that we vote to exempt.
Okay, and we, we may very well get a reimbursement in, in pilot money that comes back on our whole, hold harmless or something. So I just, I don't wanna monopolize your time here. I just thought, that's something that we could look into and have an answer, so.
No, I think it's a good idea and honestly, it may be a good education opportunity for the general public because I don't know that people always understand the impact when they vote to exempt properties from taxes, so. It's a good point.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I, I also talked to Lisa Wright about the situation and she reaffirmed what we've been discussing as far as statutory exempt and, uh, voted on exemption. She gave the example in West Rutland where the American Legion is exempt statutorily, even though they rent out the hall and have money-making events there. While the lodge in West Rutland has to be voted on, even though they may have a pancake supper too. Or a pancake breakfast. So that shows you some of the intricacies. It, it isn't as simple as it looks.
Good. Thank you for looking into that, John.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments about the assessor's report or? No, I guess we're good. Town clerk's memo.
This is Kristen. Um, Deb submitted a memo for this evening from the town clerk for March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Number one, several highway permits that need signatures. Number two, dog licensing slash renewals are due by April first and are slowly coming in. Three, real estate research has slowed slightly. Four, after-election reporting and officer updating is complete. Five, talk in legislature with regard to ongoing one hundred percent mailing of ballots for general election. Six, Governor Scott advocating for all elections to be one hundred percent mailing. Deb Hawkins, town clerk.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? Guess not. Town treasurer's memo. Julie?
Hello. Um, just two warrants today, the payroll and accounts payable. Payroll was ten thousand seven fourteen sixty-one. Accounts payable was twenty-five thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Of that, general fund monies was twenty-one thousand nine eighty-two sixty. Highway was nine thousand one thirty-six eighty-six. And wastewater was four thousand nine seventy-nine forty-two. Uh, we do need to talk about, um, the signing of the agreements for Nemrick, which Nemrick is our, our company that, um, designs all of the apps that we use. So we have the grand list, which we use for printing, I use for printing tax bills and of the assessor's office uses for, um, inputting all of the grand list information and assessment information into. Um, I use payroll. I use accounts payable. Um, I use the tax admin, which keeps track of our wastewater and our tax, um, information. Um, and communicates all of that into like the general ledger that keeps track of where all the monies are coming and going from. So it's, uh, it's a pretty big deal app. Um, I think when I sent you all the agreements, I, I don't know if I included the copies of the invoice. I meant to, but I'm not remembering doing it now. Um, but last budget season, Nemrick had sent us a letter that, um, they're, one of the bills that we get annually is the disaster recovery. And so that just like covers us for if something happens and they need to come in and like recover all of our data. And then the other one is a licensing fee and, um, support fee. And I use them a lot. So the support fee is well, money well spent. That went up a lot, like more than double, I think, from previous years. Um, but we knew about it and we had budgeted for it. So that's not, it's not a surprise. Um, I didn't receive the final education cash flow. I think I'm getting antsy about it, but it's probably a couple of months away and I need to just calm down. Um, and then I sent you the memo that has the wastewater collection so that you can review that. And if, if anyone has any questions about it. And I think that's it for me.
So the, the question is, um, licensing annual support. Julie asked me if we could just sign it and I thought we probably could, but I, I think it was better to bring it up at the meeting so that everybody could understand exactly what it was, et cetera. So we should make them, um, how much was that, Julie? I'm trying to open it up right now, but it's not.
Nemrick, uh, the, it was five thousand for the licensing and annual support. And it was like, I don't know, was it seven hundred and something for the other one? Um, yeah, I think seven hundred and something. Let me zoom in.
That's, that's only fifty-seven hundred dollars. It's not huge, but it's just good that it's.
Yeah, it's just, it was closer, the, the licensing and annual support was closer to two thousand before. But they, we went through this budget season cuz they had sent a letter that they were, they hadn't raised prices in years and they had to do a lot of upgrading of, on their end. And so they, they needed to do like a, a big hit this, this year, but we knew about it and budgeted for it during last budgeting season. They gave us a big heads up.
Okay, so, um, that can just be signed along with the warrants probably, right? Bobby can sign that or you can sign that? Do we wanna just authorize Julie to sign it or just have Bob sign it when he comes tomorrow to sign? What do you think, Julie?
I don't care who signs it. It just needs to be signed.
Says user signature right there, so I guess that could be Julie. Everybody okay with, with just having Julie sign that and Nemrick can?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So then just sign it duly then and then we'll go to the warrants. That, is that everything on your memo, Julie?
That is everything in my memo. Um, I just.
Wastewater.
The wastewater was, yeah, if anyone has any questions on that collection, um, we should be, if everything was perfect, we would be at twenty-four eight twelve fifty needing to be collected. And we're at, um, thirty-three six sixty-seven fifty-eight needing to be collected, so we're not doing too bad.
Seven, seven thousand under. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I did have a question about that because the numbers looked like we had collected two-thirds of the total. But is that not the case?
We had collected, um, yeah, so we've, well, I mean, in that range.
Yeah.
And we do, we do, so you probably aren't familiar with this because, um, we, you're not on wastewater, but we do, um, four installments. So we're pretty close. I mean, we always have delinquencies, basically is what I'm trying to say, so.
So it's about the usual amount of delinquencies? This is normal?
Yeah.
Okay, just double checking.
Yeah.
All right, good, thank you. And the warrant, did everybody look the warrants over?
Um, I'll make the motion that we approve the warrants.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
John will second.
John seconded a motion to approve the warrants. Any discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Warrant approved. Anybody else have anything for Julie? Thank you, Julie.
I do have one other thing, um, just since we have new members. Um, we, um, I need to get in touch with everyone regarding access to the banking. The, we do a lot of online banking, so, um, our bank has it set up so that all of the select board members can access, um, just visually the banking. They don't have the authority to move money, but they can see where money is and what checks have been spent. So, um, if I could get everyone to sort of contact me and we can set up a time to just, all I need to do basically is give you username and password. If I could get everyone to sort of contact me and we can set up a time to just, all I need to do basically is give you username and password to go through. And maybe we can try to do that next week if that works into anybody's schedule. You can just shoot me an email and we'll set it up.
Okay. Security grant is, is on your, on the memo?
Oh, yeah. So we just, I just sent that uh for the last meeting. I had seen um on the state of Vermont website. One of their municipal grants was for building security and we were technically past the deadline, but sometimes they extend deadlines. So I didn't know if that was something that you were. Might be interested in pursuing. We could see if they would grant an extension.
Well, it seems like it would certainly be a good idea to just at least see if there's something available, maybe more security cameras at least or something like that. Couldn't hurt for certain. Anybody else have any comment on that or?
I, I have a sort of general question regarding grants. Who does grant writing for us?
Kristen?
I've done, I've done several. I've worked with Keith on doing several in the past.
Because I know we get some grants for the roads. And occasionally I hear, like this past winter, I heard about a grant that was for um like sprucing up public spaces. And I sort of thought it might be something nice for the town to apply for, but I didn't know who does grant writing for the town. So.
So this is Kristen. So I've done specifically working with Keith on the roads in the past. I know that the Community Connectors Group. Sarah Young has worked on heading up some others. When I was hired into my role, working with Keith on grants and helping to write grants for the town was a part of my position's umbrella. Admittedly, it's something that I could definitely carve out more time for. Um, so I'm happy if you see, see any that are. You know, looking like they're worth pursuing for us. I'd definitely love to see them and. Could, you know, see what I can do for that.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah.
Kristen, do you think you might have a chance to look and see if that security grant deadline is extended or?
Yeah, this is Kristen. I will definitely, I put it on my list to look into it. And oftentimes, um, I mean, it all sort of depends and the dates are the dates. But from my experiences with um V-Trans and the FEMA groups and some of the other, the planning commission, some of the other organizations that we've worked with. They're excited to be able to give the money away. Um, and oftentimes if you just communicate with them and it's within tolerances, they are happy to be accommodating. So I can check in and see if, see if it's something that we could still be eligible for. And oftentimes too, sometimes they'll allow you to receive funding for projects that you've already completed. Um, so we could potentially even look into the, the security improvements we've already made and see if that could be some costs that we could get reimbursed for. So I will do some homework and let you all know what I find.
Sounds good.
Julie, maybe you can um send, did you send the link in that original email?
I believe that I did because I was very proud of myself for inserting a link in an email, which is.
Oh, yeah.
Like something that I get all excited about.
You did. Nice. Okay, here, I've got it pulled up right now. So, well done. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're, I'm proud. I'm impressed. All of the above. Great. Yes, through the Department of Public Safety and Homeland Security through the state of Vermont. So I've got the tab up on my computer and have it on my list of things to do. Thank you.
All right, emergency management director?
Um, nothing this, at the end of the month, there's nothing from Bob.
Okay, or health officer. Okay.
Correct.
So we're wastewater treatment facility. We had a plug last week. I guess Keith, can you come back on and tell us where exactly it was or where they feel it was?
Yeah, I guess I can come back on. Uh, yeah, uh, it was obviously at the high end of the collection system way up by Mickey Pliscos, which most of you know where that is. It's which is the last house on the hookup before you get to Bob Jones's, but we exposed the manholes all the way back to Ronnie Taylor's. The one in the end of his driveway before we found one that was functional. So the uh, the clog was. Uh, right in front of the Newtown property. The trailer. So that's where it was. So uh, we, he took two loads out of there. A-one pumped two loads out of the collection system to get it down so we, we could work on it. And then they put their jet up through from Ronnie Taylor's. And then back down through from the other way before they got it broke free. It looked to be mostly like shop towels. You know, the blue, heavy blue paper towel with the fiber in it so that it doesn't decompose and break down. So that's about all we saw that, you know, that looked like it wasn't compatible with our system. But it, it obviously had it plugged pretty well. And it wasn't something new. It obviously had been plugged for a few days there to, to run that much material in it. And then uh, when we looked at the Spruce Gum Pump Station, it had been running like point four oh per day. And it was down to point two seven, point two five. So for four or five days there. So obviously the, you know, I think that probably was how long it had been plugged. So.
Okay.
Um, and then we, he just flushed some more back off the truck to flush it out and get it opened and flowing good. And the way we went, we were out of there by three o'clock, I guess, so.
Good. Thank you for that. Anybody have any questions or? Guess not. Okay. Excellent. Older unfinished business. The inclusive inclusivity declaration. Anybody have any comments on that? How do we, how do we want to start? How do we want to look at this? Kristen?
This is Kristen. I just wanted to add that this is the topic that um the select board received an email regarding that was requested to be shared at the meeting. I don't have to share it first off, um, but just wanted to remind you all of that.
Okay. Does anybody have any? Any comments yet to, to start this discussion off yet?
Sure. This is Jessica. I'll go. I think that from the. Document that we were sent to look over last time, um, there are, there are two suggestions in that document that really jumped out as me, at me, as ones that. That I think that we should implement and I think would be to implement. One of them was this concept that in order to be welcoming to people who might be new to our meetings. That we ask speakers who are going to use acronyms to the first time that they use acronyms to speak them out. So everyone knows what the acronym means. And I personally know that's been a big stumbling block to me in starting to understand things. You know, RRPC and DRB and all of these acronyms. It took, I've got it now, but it took me a little while. So I think that that would be a very helpful policy for us to put forward in our meetings. Um, the second one that I, I think I mentioned last week that I liked this one a lot was the idea of adding a youth advisory member. To some of our boards. And if we had a youth advisory member to the select board, I think that would be a wonderful way to get. To get young people involved particularly. I don't know how this person would be selected exactly or what we would do. To get them involved, but I, I'd like to throw that concept out there as a, as a really positive one that. That I think would not be difficult and could be very helpful.
Okay, so a youth advisory board on the select board. So we'd have to come up with some type of, of way to. To choose someone and we'd have to figure out, you know. I guess probably the first thing we'd have to do would be to start to see if anybody else in the state has, has gone to that approach. And just.
See how they did it. Um, this is Jessica. I'd be willing to look into that to see if there are some examples throughout the state of people who have had youth advisory members. I mean, I personally would be interested also in having a youth advisory member of the planning commission.
Okay. Julie?
So um, this is Julie. I think uh, one place to start is, and speaking of acronyms that nobody understands. It's not like, it's not the State Department of Education or Agency of Education. I feel like there's a State Board of Education, something like that. And they do actually have, um, they do have a student representing that. So that's at the state level. So it's not an unheard of thing to do in this state to have um kids be involved. Obviously, this is kids being involved in questions about education, which directly impacts kids, but so does everything that happens in the towns that they live in. And I think it would be a way to build civic engagement in a population, probably pretty disconnected from that concept.
And it would also help us as older people to know what's on the minds of younger folks in our town. Um, I do see a comment there in the chat that, um, a couple of comments in fact. Um, Harley Cudney has commented that he's not sure I meant just the select board. Now, it could be other town groups as well. I mean, I think the select board would be a great place to start. And I would, since I'm also on the planning commission, that would be one I'd be interested in as well. And it looks like Rhonda has said that Dorset has a housing commission with a youth member. All right, I can, I can look into seeing how Dorset has done that as well. Thank you.
Okay. So that's a good place to start. Does anybody else have any? Maureen?
Um, I was thinking that one thing that might be helpful and welcoming to people is if there was um an added page on the Polit. Website, the Polit government website with a list of community and county resources for people. You know, such as mutual aid organizations, um, assistance with housing, addressing hunger. And you know, if there was a collection of resources, so somebody moving, somebody new to the community needs to like, even, it could even be childcare. Or doctors' offices or whatever, but I was specifically thinking like nonprofits and mutual aid. Where somebody can go and find where they, where they may be able to get those resources.
Kristen?
In response, this is Kristen. In response to Maureen's last comment, I could be wrong. John Malcolm might have more information on this. But as far as I'm aware, Sarah Young, who's our community connector, has been starting to work on some resource pages. I'm not sure exactly where those are going to be housed, but I'm wondering if perhaps those are things that are already in motion. And maybe the town just needs to do a little bit of coordination. Martha and Bob Shoneman are just saying Sarah Young is posting resources on the Polit library website. So perhaps we could connect Sarah with our towns web coordinator. To, to sort of marry those two and make them more visible. That's just a suggestion from me. Thank you.
Maureen? Are you muted?
Not anymore. Um, I have another suggestion that I, I'm wondering, I don't know that other towns and communities have this, but it was just something I was musing over. I'm wondering if communities have like a liaison who goes between. You know, who does the community outreach between members of the community and the select board. I know the select board has a lot of things on their plate that they do and you know, it's, everybody has a day job. But I'm wondering if that would be something that the board or we want to consider as a community.
We have a service, I think, what is it called? A uh. It's a service coordinator. Bob Shoneman used to be it. I don't, is, Bob, are you on? Are you still?
Go ahead. Hi, everybody. I was on it for about twenty-five years and then a couple of years ago, the position was eliminated. So no, I'm not on it anymore.
Okay.
Would it be possible for Bob to, for you, Bob, to tell us what you did in that position?
Well, actually, most of it was getting uh fuel assistance for people that couldn't get the fuel. We had wood and oil and then I did a lot of fundraising to get. Couple of thousand bucks. So somebody who was running out of oil and they, and they were freezing. Occasionally, like once a year, there would be a situation where some person was locked out because of a. Domestic dispute and we could direct them to a motel or something, just, you know, in the middle of the night, when, in the winter. But most of it was getting fuel assistance. And that still exists with a, I think Tim Bryant. Has the account in the name of the Polit Church Fuel, Fuel Fund.
That sounds like a very useful thing for people in Polit, especially in these times when, you know, we've been having. People have lost their jobs throughout the past year. I wonder why it was stopped. Does anyone know?
I do not know. I think I was told by the town clerk that, that position is no longer available. I think I was on it for twenty-five years and I got a plaque. From the Deb Markowitz that, I think she was the town or the state treasurer.
I can't, I can't remember. It wasn't anything we did on this end. It was something I think that the state altered some of the ways that they did things or something like that in that position. We'll probably have to talk to Debbie and see if she remembers.
Yeah.
Why that was, why that was abandoned, that position.
I was in touch a lot with Brock and what that, the Rutland uh.
Bennington Rutland.
The Bennington Rutland Brock.
Something Commission.
Yeah, so I could refer people who needed help to Brock for various, various things that were available.
This is Frank. If.
Go ahead.
If those roles um that Bob was doing before were taken up by other state agencies. Then maybe what Maureen is suggesting is that all those state agencies be listed someplace for this assistance. And that if Bob wants to talk to Maureen or check with somebody on this to see that all those valuable duties that he. And tasks he did for the good of people. Should not have been left orphaned. So it would be interesting to find out who's doing that. Uh, certainly it should never have been an orphaned job, leaving people in the lurch. I just don't see that's logical.
What I, what I, thank you. I agree with that. And what I'm also suggest, suggesting is that we have a community member. You know, it sounds like Bob was that person um that community, members of the community can trust. And go to and talk to without judgment and ask for help. And that's not always going to be the members of the select board because. And, and that's nothing, that's no judgment on who's, who is the select board. It's just not necessarily the role of the select board. and, and that's nothing, that's no judgment on who's, who is the select board, it's just not necessarily the role of the select board. So I'm just suggesting, uh, a peer liaison, I guess.
Okay.
I, I, this is Jessica, I really like that idea. I mean, already as a, already as a select board member, I've been starting to get messages and phone calls from people who have, who have issues, obviously, and wonder if I can, you know, listen to them. And of course, I am trying to, and, um, any concerns that people have that I can't just give them a nice answer for, I'll bring to the select board. But I can see that it might be helpful to have somebody who was not on the select board, so who didn't have this sort of government role, who could then, you know, collect, collect concerns from people who might not be willing to bring them to us directly.
Anybody else have any questions or comments so far, or?
Yeah.
Go ahead, yeah.
I think Sarah Young has been working on this quite a lot as far as, uh, more trying to establish what volunteer opportunities there are in town with the different organizations. And I think, uh, uh, the group that meets with her once a month, including Jessica and myself, I think that's an appropriate place to start, or one possibility, to see how we can do it the other way, in that, uh, how we can connect with the dozen or so groups in town and come up with some appropriate clearinghouse for situations, just as Maureen and Jessica have described. I'd be happy to talk to her about it, or Jessica, or anyone.
Okay. So Julie Mack has her hand up next.
Um, I just was gonna say, um, speaking of Sarah, with the work that she's doing, she may be a possibility for this. She's already, the library already was involved in a community engagement, um, program. And so she may be someone that's maybe familiar to people, and also she's in the library and often people will go to the library, as, as a resource, especially now that it's a wifi hotspot. So, um, Sarah might be a logical person to think of for this.
Okay, thank you. Bob and Martha?
I think at the last meeting, John, you mentioned, uh, something about Jane Rink, who started the, uh, Polit Scholarship Fund, which I've been on ever since it began, and we, we have over half a million in an endowment, we give about 35,000 a year to Polit residents, and Jane was just fantastic. So I forget exactly, I think you said, John, we should kind of have her be one of the people remembered who started this incredible scholarship fund.
I think that was in the Historical Society meeting, Bob, and
Okay.
we were debating, uh, different, uh, people from Revolutionary Soldiers on.
Yeah, right.
Celebrate. And so my question was to see someone, uh, like Jane Rink, that should be celebrated um, in some way too. Uh, that was the context for that.
Okay, I got confused, but the peo, new people should know about the Polit Scholarship Fund, that Polit residents who, uh, need to advance their education, we have this wonderful fund in this town.
Okay, Bob?
Uh, Mike, we, we got away from it a little bit, but what Jessica was talking about earlier, um, with, I believe they refer to it at Green Mountain Power as like a shadowing. Um, they have, uh, high school students that actually come in and shadow some of the professional engineers and whatnot. Um, a lot of it is, is, um, they, they have intentions of, of, uh, advancing their education in that field, but they're not necessarily sure of what it's all about, so it gives them an idea of what it's about, and if, uh, you know, if it were to be someone that was interested in politics or interested in what we do and managing the town, you know, they would, in, in turn, they would shadow the select board, so to speak, and, uh, and really learn more about what we do and, and how it's not just one, one angle, it's, um, you know, it's anything from, from dealing with the, the, the people and what they're, they're looking for, but also finances and predictions and highways and equipment and everything that's involved in, in our, our week to week, uh, you know, job, so to speak here. So.
Okay, Kristin?
Something, you know, they have, they have high school students that, that do that, uh, that are late in high school, but it may even be some, some college students or something that may be interested to get extra credit for, uh, looking into, to what the town boards do.
Kristin?
And this, this, this is Kristin, this is just to also, um, piggyback on that, on the, on the youth advisory individual potentially. There have been, prior to this conversation, there has been several of our office or folks that work for the town have expressed the interest in having perhaps a high school age individual, um, with helping out with different office responsibilities as well. So in an effort to maybe make these a more robust, uh, you know, like I'm thinking about specifically Jonas Rosenthal, um, was thinking that it would be interesting to have somebody to help out with zoning.
Okay, thank you. So, the other night, when you, uh, presented this, uh, Maureen, and you sent this, this link, and I started to look the link over, I really didn't, it seemed like this is a very blanket big, big picture type of link, that I didn't really see how it fits in our town very well. And, and as I, in a look through it, I think that most of these mechanisms are already in place in our town. It's just, just may not be as clear to who you go to or stuff like that, maybe I just take it for granted that, that all of this stuff is, is going on, but it, when somebody needs something, I've always seen that everybody comes to each other's aides and such like that, and I don't, I'm, I guess maybe I don't understand exactly where you're going with this.
I, I don't see it that way, Mike. I see that, um, you know, people who have been in the community for a long time, or who have, have access to, um, certain people know that these structures exist, but it's not, it's not put out there for the public to easily access. And I think that that's really important for us to do, and, you know, there are, there are a lot of things in this document where simple things that the town can do to create that welcome, more welcoming atmosphere. I do, you know, I do, really do think like, people of Polit, it's a community, you know, we are a community that comes together and that is friendly, but I think it's really important to, like, put that out there and make that known. And it's to have a central point where somebody can go for those resources. You know, you move into town, you don't know who to turn to, then, um, or you are a single mom and you don't ever make it to the select board meetings because you're running your kids around, or you're making dinner, or you're helping them with homework, you know, like, it's not, it's not, you can't assume that those things are known and accessible for everybody.
Okay, so, but there's, there's also a lot that, that's covered in that, in that flyer that you, that you sent to us that really, I, I, it kind of threw me because it's, it's so broad and vague, and, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that I didn't quite understand why, how it even fit into our town.
Well, these are suggestions, they're not, you know, every single town should do this. These are, it's a, it's a bunch of different sug- suggestions, what different towns can do to kind of take a, a different look at, um, how we can encourage, uh, inclusiveness and diversity, and how we can make that be known. You know, it's not, it's not, um, a thorough list, there are things outside of lists that we can do, there are things in the list that, you know, we might not decide work for our community. But I think, you know, on the very, at the very minimum, we should be creating a statement, and there are other towns in Rutland that are joining, there's sort of a initiative by an organization that I'm not affiliated with at all, called Project Vision, and they're encouraging every town in the county of Rutland to create a diversity inclusion state declaration. And, um, Pittsford has done it, Brandon has done it, I'm not sure what other town, I think maybe one or two other towns have, have also done that. And I would like to know, you know, like, what, what kind of statement for the town of Polit would look like. And I've, I've read some of them, and I have an idea as to what they might look like, and I'm wondering if anyone else has put time into looking at that.
Okay, well, I mean, I, this, this is, this is a very broad subject, it's gonna take quite a lot of research and and input from, from the public to deal with, so I think that's one of the things that we have to start right now, is to try and understand, you know, what, what it is that's, that seems to be lacking to people. Like you say for yourself, when you moved here, that you didn't really understand the whole everywhere to go and such like that. But I guess probably, uh, the local store used to be the hub of all that, and, and with the modern age, I guess I haven't kept up to the, to the fact of, of how that information gets out and et cetera, so.
Yeah.
That's my.
I have a couple of things to say, though, I see that Frank had his hand up first.
Okay, go ahead, Frank.
I, uh, see that it's, this is a, you know, I think an attractive direction is basically a roadmap to the town and the functions of the town. And what Julie was saying was, was going on, I believe it was Julie at the library already with the point there, maybe there would be a group of people tied up with that library center that's already doing a lot of this, put something together and bring it back to the select board as a concrete proposal. Uh, how would that sound, Maureen? Thank you.
I think that we could have a, we should form a committee, and I'd happy to be a part of that committee.
Kristin?
Hi, this is Kristin. So I just did a quick Google search, and just so that the select board can have some point of reference, the town of Brandon, uh, if, if you would like, I'd be happy to share, I found the town of Brandon's Declaration of Inclusion. Would you be interested in hearing what that is?
Yes, please do.
Okay, so for the town of Brandon, it says, "The town of Brendan, Brandon condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity or expression, age or disability, and will protect these classes to the fullest extent of the law. As a town, we formally condemn discrimination in all of its forms and commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. The town of Brandon has and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions." And they adopted this on January 25th of this year. So just thought I'd offer that to the conversation so that you'd have an idea of, of what Maureen was referencing, what some of the other towns might have done. Thank you.
That would be something that we could gather, a few of those, and, and Jessica, you had some
Yeah.
questions also, some.
Not so much questions as, as my perspective on this. I mean, as you all know, I'm a fairly new, new person in town, this is my third year. And I certainly didn't know where to turn for anything when I first moved here. I didn't think of going down to the town hall and talking to people. I looked at things online, and, um, and I drove around town and I saw like what kind of signs people had up to. I knew that, I, I hoped that this town would be welcoming to me and my wife because I saw a couple pride flags. And so I assumed that there were some people here who were welcoming of queer people. But I, if I hadn't seen that, I might not have considered moving here. Because, I mean, on the website, there's, there isn't a statement like that, that says that we don't discriminate against gay people. And there isn't on the employment page a statement that we are an equal opportunity employer. I mean, in the past, when I've taken a job, I've always kind of tried to look at the website of the place I'm working for, because you can't outright ask someone, you know, are you homophobic? You just can't do that. So you look at their website and you see if they mention any other people who work there who might be gay. Or you see if they have a statement that says that they aren't, that they support equality for people of all sexual orientations. And if they don't have something like that, it's kind of a red flag for a queer person that they might not be welcoming. I mean, and I know, I know that people here are welcoming to people of different races and of different genders and of different sexual orientations and ages and all that list of things. But for people who traditionally have been on the wrong end of some kind of discrimination, and who may have felt it in their own lives, like, I mean, there was a time when I couldn't let my employer know I was married, because I would have got fired. And so for someone who's had that kind of experience, seeing words that say, "We specifically welcome you," is really, really helpful. And the second, so that's, that's my, like, little moment of self-revelation here. The second thing that I'd like to say is that, is that, um, the way that our town has come to the attention of people from outside our town who might be thinking of moving here lately is through the attention that has been drawn to Mr. Banyer in Slate Ridge. I mean, you know that we've gotten national and state publicity on that. That's like the biggest way that Polit is on the map right now. And Mr. Banyer has openly accused the select board in particular, and the town in general, of all sorts of things. He has said that we are racist and homophobic and misogynistic and nepotistic. And that's out there in the ether as something that the town of Polit stands accused of. And I think it would really help our image with people who aren't from here, who might be thinking of working here or doing business here or living here, for us to make some kind of statement that says we aren't those things. So that the word of one person from our community isn't the one that's out there, but the word of everybody from our community. All right, that's it, that's my piece.
All right, thank you. So I guess, um, now the next thing is we gotta try and organize a committee. Uh, is that something that Sarah Young is, is active in a great deal of that, because she has all the, uh, there's all the research from, from the library project of a couple of years ago, where they, where they interviewed many different groups in the town.
Mike, this is Rich.
Yes, Rich.
So back to what Jessica was saying, I mean, I don't think we should be trying to attract any just certain, uh, group of people. This town is welcoming to every group of people. I don't think we should be singling or trying to separate anybody out. I think this town needs to be welcoming to everybody, not just queers, not just blacks, not just whites. You know, I, I, I just don't see it as an issue here in the town of Polit. And I've been here my whole entire life.
Okay, thank you for that.
And not, and, I mean, most everybody's not gonna take Mr. Banyer's word for the, you know, KKK members on the town select board. I mean, that's just ridiculous. I mean, most folks know better. If they do any research on his background, they'll, they'll figure that out.
Okay, um, Maureen?
Mike, my question to you is, as the, as the chair, um, if we are welcoming to everybody, then let's put that on the website, that we're welcoming to everybody.
Okay, um, Julie?
I was struggling for a second. Um, I can tell you that the Poli, the Meadowwee School Board recently adopted an equity statement, I have it in front of me. It's slightly different, obviously, because It's slightly different, obviously, because we're in the business of educating. But it just says, "Education equity means that each child receives what he or she needs to develop his or her full academic and social potential. Working towards equity involves commitment to access, process and outcomes, including by removing the predictability of success or failures that currently correlates with social or structural or cultural factors, interrupting inequitable practices, examining biases and creating inclusive multicultural school environments for adult and children. And three, discovering and cultivating the unique gifts, talents and interests that every human possesses. Equity goes beyond formal equality where all students are treated the same. Achieving equity may require an unequal distribution of resources and services." So I read that to you, not because I think that you need to adopt that literally word for word, but it's just an example of, I think, what Jessica and Maureen are trying to talk about. And that is not to say that by having, um, a statement like that on our website, we are not promoting Polit as a place for, say, "All LGBTQ people come here, this is your place." Polit is a place for everyone. And in order to make that clear, it just is helpful to have a declaration stating that. And so it's not, it's not opening one door to one, like subset of the population. It's really just putting a banner up that says, "We are welcoming here." I think that's more of what they're trying to convey. Maybe I'm wrong.
Okay, but, uh, Frank, we'll take your question and then I think we need to, uh, just can keep continuing this conversation. This is certainly not something that we're going to be able to, to deal with in one night. It's, it's going to be a, a work in progress to come up with, with something that works for everyone. And, and if we could, uh, keep this all going and, and, and come to, uh, come to a spot, Frank?
I'm seeing a general theme and I think you're right. It, it is chairperson, you should exhaust the conversation. You could go all night. Uh, but maybe a select board member as a point person to interact with Sarah Young, Maureen, and a group to come up with a concrete proposal that would obviously be, uh, then, uh, put up on the website uh, as a, an endorsed proposal from the town select board, uh, would be the next phase to go through, go through words. This is taken out of the, of the agenda, the select board and, and ironed out with a concerned group of citizens and come back to the select board with a concrete proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen, would you read the letter, please?
Sure. Dear, uh, March 23rd, 2021, dear Polit Select Board, with regard to the meeting of March 9th, requested that the community slash board consider a declaration of diversity, equity and inclusiveness. I moved to the area almost 35 years ago as a single parent. I worked locally. I never found Polit and surrounding towns to be anything but welcoming. Over the years, these communities have become even more diverse. If a sign reads, "All are welcome," it means just that, "All are welcome." Definition of "all" used to refer to the whole community, or excuse me, the whole quantity or extent of a particular group or thing. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, things have changed greatly. We are socially distant, many work from home. I do not feel that we as a community should enable special task force on our select board to improve unity and inclusiveness in our town, as this has never been an issue. It is up to each individual to go and connect with people in your community. Polit should stay at, as it, stay as it is. Respectfully, Janet Bearline. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll keep this on as, as unfinished business and Kristen?
Just on, on that note, Mike, I just would like to offer to the board that I would be happy to gather some additional examples of some other inclusivity and diversity statements and provide them to you all, just as some ideas to mull over. And I also welcome, you know, Maureen, I know that you found some information, perhaps some more ideas and examples can be provided to the board. And my last thing that I wanted to add in regards to the equal opportunity employer statement, I'm a little rusty because it's been a couple of years, but I did work in corporate HR for a number of years. And I believe that should be something that's on the website. So I think for some of these items, there just might to, need to be a little bit of a general housekeeping and inventory taken. Um, and I think if any board members are so inclined to kind of do, go through the website and just make some action item ideas of things that might be eligible for tidying up, that could be of benefit. But just so you know, from me to you, those are some things that I, I'll do for the board between now and next week and we'll add it to older unfinished business.
Okay, I think that would be very beneficial. Anybody that has, has more information that, that we can help. Because the more information we compile together, the better informed we can be on this subject. Purchasing policy when you have a chance, Kristen?
Oh, yep. So that, I just added that as that was a policy that I had sort of sent in the 11th hour to you all before the last meeting. So I just added it to the agenda in the event that anybody had anything to say. I didn't necessarily intend for it to be a big discussion. I just wanted you all to have an opportunity to discuss it if you felt you needed to.
Okay, does everybody, other than new members, understand the purchasing policy? No questions?
No, it seemed pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Okay. Rich?
What's that? Uh, you're?
That purchasing? Yeah, purchasing policy, any questions on that at all?
No.
No. Okay, good. Any new business?
Um, I have, I have, uh, two things actually. Um, the first is, um, regarding a concern that I've heard about, um, how the listers are going to be coming around to look at people's places who have had, um, who have gotten a permit to do work in 2020. And I got a call from them, but I knew that was coming because I was at the last select board meeting where it got mentioned. But I have heard that other people who got calls weren't aware that this was something that was going to happen and were kind of surprised by it. So I'm wondering, and this might be a matter more for the planning commission or for the zoning administrator, but I'm wondering if there's a way that we can make sure that folks, when they apply for a permit, know that after they do their work, someone might come around to look at it. You know, so that they're not going to be like, why is someone calling me up to come around and look at it?
Okay, that, that would be, that would make sense that it was, that was added on the permit somewhere that after your building is complete, the listers will come and evaluate and, and attach a value to, to your improvements. Okay, and Julie has her hand up? Oh, excuse me, you have two things, Jessica?
Oh, uh, Ju, Julie's is about this, um, I'm fine.
Yeah, so I, I may be, maybe overstepping here in my things, in my thinking. But I sort of see this, and I literally had written down as part of our last discussion, part of this all to me is coming together as like an education piece, right? I have had, I can't tell you how many people who come into the community who do not understand that like, we don't send tax bills every month, that we don't, um, you know, you don't just get to move in or change your address on Monday and I reissue a tax bill with your corrected name and address on Tuesday. Like, there's a lot of misunderstandings from just average, everyday people about how municipal government operates. And this falls directly into that. And maybe that is a piece that we can work on while we think about the, the website and while we think about, um, maybe just sort of being more inclusive. I mean, part of being inclusive, right, is getting new people to come in and not having them immediately be on the delinquent tax list because no one passed on a copy of their tax bill or explained anything to them. And I believe that the responsibility for most of that lies on the attorneys that, in the local area, but they're just not doing it. So if we could do a better job of having a website that is more educational to people coming in, that that might be a benefit to people that are already here and people that are coming in and just everybody across the board. So.
Okay, thank you. Frank, is yours relative to Jessica's statement?
Yeah, point one, we haven't gotten to Jessica's point two, is we could probably put the fact that they're going to be, uh, changing their property value on the permit application and that there would be a potential increase in their taxes and someone may want to assess the changes. Uh, that could be easily put onto the permit application. Thank you.
Okay.
So yes, that, this is Jessica. That would probably be something to talk with, with the planning commission and with Jonas. My second one was also related to something that Jonas brought up. And again, part of this could be through the planning commission, but it would involve the website. And so I would have to run it, run this past the select board as well. Jonas has mentioned that he knows that there are, so we have this thing in zoning called home occupation, which is a permitted use, which means you need a permit for it in nearly every category, um, in nearly every district that we have. And this is like people doing the ordinary things that people do with their house and sell something, right? You know, like someone sells some online crafts from their house or someone, you know, makes, makes pottery and, you know, then goes to the farmer's market and sells their pottery. These are all home occupations. And there's rules about how it can't take up more than 30% of the home, can't have more than two employees from outside the household. But it's just, it's those little things that we as Vermonters do, uh, as our side hustles in order to get by, right? And we know that there are a lot of people in the town of Polit who have home occupations. And there are very few of them who've gotten a permit for them as a permitted use. And part of this is probably education, that folks don't necessarily know that when something says permitted use, it means you can do it, but you need a permit. And so Jonas has been sort of talking about how it's frustrating that there are so many people who have these home occupations and don't necessarily have a permit. So I had this thought, which was that maybe in order to sort of educate, again, back to kind of what Julie was saying, people, to educate people that when they have a little side hustle in their house, that they need a permit, that if we could do some education on that and then we could offer sort of a carrot, where if they got their permit, we could maybe have a list on our website of little, um, home-based businesses that are in our town and they could get a little bit of advertising out of it. So that was my thought. And I just sort of wanted to throw that out there and see what the select board thought.
That, I hope it doesn't turn into something where, where it appears that the select board is showing favoritism or something like that. It, I think that's, I, I understand exactly. We could, I guess if we listed just the permits that people have with the name of their business, it, it's not really, it's not really giving them a plug, but it, it, but it is, it's saying like, um, permitted, permitted, uh, businesses in our town.
Yeah, and obviously we would go back through for all the ones that were already permitted. I mean, it's just, just, just a thought, but that I, I, I don't see that if we go around and try to tell a bunch of people that they need to pay and get a permit for the thing they've been doing in their house all the time, that that's going to go well, right? But, but as, as Jonas is saying, it started to cause some troubles when someone doesn't have a permit and someone else does, and then there's some conflict because of that, right? And so I'm just trying to brainstorm ways that we could do. And yeah, I don't think it would be showing favoritism if we just listed who had a, what, what businesses had a permit. Because that would just be, that would just be a list. And it could be helpful for people in the town to know what their neighbors are. I mean, if they're like, I want to buy some eggs and you find that, you know, so-and-so's place that has chickens has a permit for their home occupation with chickens, you're like, oh, okay. Hey, you know, I could go there.
Right, so that we basically putting, be putting out a list of permitted uses in the town without any type of, without any showing any type of, anything other than, these are all the people in town that have permits to run these businesses.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Frank, you have a question?
Yeah, in regards to, uh, a notification of needing a permit or not, uh, would it be difficult, Julie, for, uh, an insert to be put in to the taxes when they go, the tax bills when they go out as a reminder? Some little bl- blurbs that people get with their tax bills. They'll pay attention because they're opening the tax bill envelope. Thank you.
Okay.
Just reminding people that they need to get a permit to do, to like put about building? Or reminding people that, I guess I don't understand the question.
I, I think, I think we're talking about reminding people that they need a permit to run a little business out of their house.
Oh, yeah, I write, I write a letter to accompany all of the tax bills anyway. So if you have helpful hints that would go into that letter, I could add that easily enough.
Okay, this is Jessica. Um, honestly, what I was thinking when Julie was talking earlier was that we might want to have either like a little pamphlet or a little like online video or something that's sort of a new Polit resident 101. Like, hey, you're new to Polit, here's some stuff that you should know. And I know that the fire department puts out a like welcoming thing to new folks. But if it's, hey, here's what you need to know about your taxes. Here's what you need to know about permitting. Here's what you need to know about available services. Like, you know, who can pick up your trash for you? And, and also, you know, things like that, if the, the, the thing that Bob used to do, you know, with the, helping out with the heating. If it was just a, hey, here's a lot of useful services, things like that. Municipal Government 101. Yeah, something like that. New Polit Resident 101. And that would be very welcoming of us to folks who don't know what's going on.
Okay. Very good, very good suggestions. We'll have to keep this, keep this conversation going too. What else, uh, do we have for new business tonight? I guess that's the end of new business for tonight. Public comment? Is there anybody that has any public comment? Kristen?
Yes, this is Kristen. Um, excuse me. So just to kind of piggyback on all of this, so, um, and this is sharing it as me as an attendee. Um, when I was new to town, which was about six years ago or five or six years ago, I would, did go to the town hall and, um, there was, back when we could just casually enter in and out of the town hall, um, back, back in the good old days, there was that amazing bulletin board that Deb and I'm get, I mean, I imagine it's, it was everybody who occupied those offices. And it had all of this on it. I mean, you could go up to this board and it was, it was like even about where to recycle your batteries. And I mean, it just had all of this wonderful information. And there was something so valuable about being able to meet the folks who were doing all of the behind the scenes stuff Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday. Um, so I think that, I just wanted to add that I do feel like a lot of this information that we're seeking is there. It's just a matter of sort of reinventing it for this time where we're all virtual mostly. Um, so I think that, I know that Deb has had a lot on her plate lately. Um, and maybe when, you know, things smooth out a little bit too, she might be, Deb and Sue might be two great individuals too, to just bring into this conversation, um, as I think that they are such wonderful resources for, for all of this as well. And just, you know, working with Sean Ruck, who's been taking over our website, just ways in which we might be able to kind of gather everything that we do have and then add more to it and, um, you know, help to make everybody's lives in this new age a little bit smoother and more, more welcoming and easier. So thank you. That's what I wanted to add.
Just dump them on a plate or something because you can have them.
Mike Beecher.
Yes, Chuck, how are you?
I'm fine. I waited for the public comment to, I noticed that our new white Dodge is being used. I wondered when the old Dodge was going to be put out to bid.
I think as soon as we feel that we're done with the winter season. I didn't, I haven't really talked to, to Keith much about that, but I know we certainly want to make sure that we're, we're done with the winter season. That truck just, is, is kind of like the last resort for any kind of nuisance plows and stuff like that. But I'll, I'll see what Keith has to say about that. I'm, I'm sure that, you know, as, as, when we're, when we can strip it and be confident that we're not using it, we don't need it anymore. I'm sure that will be the next process.
Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chuck. And is there anybody else that has anything to offer? All right. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
This is Jessica. I move that we adjourn.
Okay, do you have a second on that?
This is Rich.
Bob seconded it? Oh, Rich, Rich seconded it. Bob, you weren't quick enough. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
All right, everyone. Thank you very much. Have a good night. We'll see you in two weeks.